The flag. The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Richmond, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on, the next item is approval of the agenda.
There are no additions, I will make a motion that the agenda be approved as presented.
I vote support then. Move and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the March 12 meeting.
How long have we approved the minutes for the March 12 meeting as submitted?
Support.
Move and supported to approve the minute for the March 12 meeting as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the financial report.
You see that I gave you an updated copy? We made the report a little bit early this month and the checking interest wasn't in and it's in now and added to your updated report. We began the month with $392,363.45. We took in receipts of $93,175.93. And we made dispersments in the amount of $27,865.73, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $457,673,673.65.
I would like to make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted.
Support.
Move and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, correspondence, item A. The county metro planning is putting on a workshop the 29th of April. If you have an interest in going, contact the clerk by 4:15, he will send in reservations for you.
Okay, I set mine in, but I said invoice the township.
Okay, that's fine.
We did brief the plan commission last week about.
Okay.
And I think I gave one, I gave one to ZDA?
Yes, it's in the package.
Okay, moving on, item B. MTA proposed resolution. Got a communication from the Michigan Township Association and they've been kind of drumming on this for a number of years. They would like a law that would say that township officers would be on a nonpartisan ballot when they tried to do it at their annual meeting, it wasn't approved. So they sent us a sample resolution to see if there was any support for that. And to me, it's not a big deal. If you're in an area that's all Democrats or all Republicans, you're probably going to run on that anyway.
I think it's a good idea.
You think it would be confusing?
No.
To the public, you think they would understand this?
I think it's a start, you're seeing this as, wait, this is how I do it. You're starting to see how polarized, whether if it's true or that, or people seeing in the press, I think this is a way that, hey, the majority of people wants to see government operate and serve the people. If you can eliminate that stuff into people to run on merit, especially that should be the deciding factor. The years, we've never had a party line vote here.
I've never seen any partisan politics in this township, do you know what I mean?
We all here serve the people.
I know.
So. We don't have it here, but I could see where you could have a disruptive stuff like what happened to the township to the south, I know the conditions are different over there, the township southeast of us, where they had that situation with people, and there could be, yeah, where.
And even that is more personality than politics.
Exactly, yeah.
Or party politics, shall I say.
I think it's just a good idea to eliminate that. I even see, don't see it at county level, maybe at the state level you start to see it, you know.
Well, we can do it tonight if you want to read it. Basically.
So.
We can go with it tomorrow.
Well, you probably would need to be retyped, which is not a problem, to the format that we use for our resolutions.
No, we can use this one right here.
We can.
We can just use this resolution.
We'll just have to put a number on it, that's all.
Well, and what the resolution states, but that's fine, whatever, I'm just, I'm a stickler for details.
Yeah, I also like what they brought up there about voter fatigue.
I'm sorry.
About voter fatigue.
Fatigue?
And I've expressed this to this body before, that I'm opposed to how they lump, continuously lump elections, saying under the guise of it saving money. And when, like for school boards, any school election, I think like every school, the three school districts that we have in our township ought to be holding their own elections on their own property and.
They used to.
Yeah.
You know, it wasn't that long ago that they used to.
I know, well.
Yeah, and I told that to the, who was the, some of these China schools when he was here last year, I said, you should be running your own elections, you're a separate government entity. I said, would you be that?
I wouldn't disagree with that, simply.
I would love to give them back, but they're not going to take them.
I know.
And why is that, is it the cost?
It always boils down to what.
And they have to. I think it came down from, I don't know, where, who decided?
Oh, Lancy decided.
The state.
Yeah, yep. What gets me is, I'm not anti-public education, but would school districts be accommodating to us in return municipalities, I tend not to think so. Technically, we serve more people than the school districts do.
Well, we serve three school districts.
Well, right, I mean, we have to look out for the totality of everyone in the township. Where if you're a school, then you just look out for students. So technically, we look out for five more people. So.
Are you going to read it, or do you want me to?
Let's read the second paragraph.
Information on second paragraph that you decided needs to be added.
Oh, do you want to do the resolution?
Well, I wish you wanted to do it next month.
Can we do it, I mean?
I don't see why you can't do it, it was on the agenda, you had it.
Oh, I thought we got it by a certain time.
I think it.
And return to MTA by the 30th of April.
If there's not a lot of dissent on this, we can do this.
Yeah, let's.
Now, does this mean, though, if we do this here and other townships in the state decline, do we get to have a ballot like this, or do we have to go with the majority of what the state?
I think it relates to the legislation.
Says the township board would have the option to have it that way. So it's not going to hurt you if you don't want to use it.
All right.
But it's pending legislation, it's not something that's a done deal yet at all.
No, I don't know, they've just been talking about it for a long time.
I would like it that way.
I would too.
I would too.
Okay.
I mean, we have all stripes on the board, but we have always got it done and get along.
Right. Doesn't matter if we're Republican or Democrat, we're running for the board.
I think the only time I voted against you guys was when you wanted Pete Proff and I wanted Flatt.
You did?
Yeah.
Wow, wow.
I'll give it a go. At the meeting of the Casco Township Board, the following resolution was offered by, by, I'll even use my name if we'd like, Dan Goldston, and supported by.
John Stevens.
This is, Dan's making the motion?
Yeah.
Be it resolved that the township board is on record in support of the legislation that would allow township boards the option to have its elected officials appear as nonpartisan on the ballot. The reasons, and I'll give this a shot, the reasons for the board's position is, or are, that partisan politics have. I gotta write this down somewhere. I'm just winging it here, but, oh, you don't have to write, we mean it down there. Well, I'm going to need the language to put in the resolution. I'll go slow. So I'm writing this down, okay. That, that, in the, that the township has not seen, has never seen, has, I lost a few, that the township, in the experience of the township, partisan politics have not entered into the administration of the township. If I'm, you're going to. At all, if ever, have not, have not entered into the administration or running of the township, and that the board has operated in a nonpartisan manner, in the recollection of all the board members many that have served for decades.
The board has operated in a.
You can make it sound better if you can, I had it good, but I lost it. The board has operated in a.
Nonpartisan. Nonpartisan.
Or you could say partisan politics have not entered into the. No, I've already started writing, has operated in a nonpartisan.
Right, manner.
What we've got, in the experience of townships. Township. Of township, partisan politics has not been entered into administration or run of the township board has operated in a nonpartisan.
Manner.
Manner. It's got a run for decision-making, board. Okay. Now, let's have Dan read it.
In the experience of the township board.
I should have done it a little better.
Couldn't have done it in six words.
Partisan politics has not been entered into, has not been entered into, I think it was. Into the administration.
Or decision-making.
Of running, of running of the township, and the board has operated in a nonpartisan manner.
For decades.
For decades. And that's it, okay, good. Now, we need, we don't know what this resolution number is, so.
Joe, roll your eyes.
Well, I thought you were just going to, for a reason, you just say that we feel would be beneficial to townships.
No, we're going to.
You can offer that as an amendment to the resolution.
No, I'm not doing any.
No, you spoke, that's, we have it. The only thing is, in your motion, now, I don't, we don't have the resolution number, so you'll have to just say you adopt the resolution and we'll get.
2019.
Dad, and we'll get the resolution number tomorrow, because we weren't prepared to adopt this. He's getting it.
Did we have one last month?
The meeting, the minutes. Our business approval. No, again.
I didn't intend to do that. Yeah, resolution 2019-8, the Comcast franchise agreement. So this should be 2019-09.
Yep.
Okay. We need a roll call vote on this.
We need support first.
We got it.
We got it, it's in there.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
That's fine, so now we need roll call.
I need roll call vote.
Okay, Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Pat. Yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen. Yes. All right. Motion to.
Resolution is adopted.
And it was frozen, 2019-09. But that's.
Dan did a good job, you know, being on the spot. I'm sure if we went back in time and we saw like a Patrick Henry or that, we'd probably say, no, it's not quite what it's been written in history.
Right, but that's okay.
You got it.
You did very well.
Okay, moving on. Old business, item A, fire contract update. Had a meeting with a couple of the townships in the city of Richmond over the renewal of our fire contract. In your packet was a copy of the proposed changes. The formula is the same, we're increasing the amount for fire trucks, and we have a five-year agreement. My only suggestion was, what was that, on the first page? Nobody seemed to have an objection. And basically, I just wanted in there, when it says they supply this, this, and this, that they supply monthly reports. There's a neighboring township and a neighboring fire department that got into a fight and they didn't provide the reports, and they couldn't build the people. It got kind of nasty. So, does anybody have any input as far as either the language or the amount for the fire vehicles, or anything else?
No, I just appreciate that it's, you negotiated a five-year contract.
Yeah, me too.
Could you refresh us on what happened to ladder truck?
Well, in a nutshell, a tree fell across the road, a garbage truck stopped, and the ladder truck did it, and it totaled it up. But it was older than dirt, and it was just a ladder truck, that's all it did. So the one they got, which is brand new, $600,000, but it's also a pumper, the same as the other one. So it's much more than just a ladder truck.
That's great.
So, but they had to finance half of it. The city of Richmond financed it for them, so that's why they want to up the money a little bit for vehicles.
That's understandable.
Yeah, they don't come cheap, they don't.
I'm surprised they got it for that.
Yeah, you see in the Intake Magazine always township or selling a used vehicle.
Yeah, from the 1930s.
Okay, well, hopefully that'll be on the, that'll be on the agenda next month, unless somebody wants something changed or whatever.
Okay, so we're not.
Nope, it's just for review tonight.
All right.
It doesn't run out until the end of June, so we got time to deal with that. Okay, moving on, item B, park update. We finally got all our paperwork into the state with the DNR to try and get our money that they said they would give us. And it came to, I'm trying to push bunches of math here, $146,720.99. Haven't heard of good, bad, or indifferent, so I don't know how slow they are in paying. The county said that when we get the grant, they will match up to $26,000, half the remaining to the 200. So that's the plan right now, so we're just waiting.
Where's this, where's this $146, oh, $146,700.
Yeah.
Well, we budgeted $200,000.
Right.
But we only spent $198,271.61. So when you take 74% of that, which is what the DNR is kicking in, that's where you get the $146,000. So it came pretty close.
What's the net?
Huh?
What's the net, cost of the parking ultimately?
What's the net?
Yeah, with, after all of the contributions from the county and the DNR.
Well, the first go around, when we procured it for Six Rivers, we spent some money there, because we had to get an appraisal in closing costs and stuff. The net on this portion is going to be about $27,000 out of the 200.
So we've really, you have really done an amazing thing with this part.
Well, we started good.
Most of the monies we started with still remain to.
Right, it's going to take money to operate it, even if it's as simple as it gets.
I just wanted to emphasize it.
Right.
Yeah.
It's really quite amazing.
Well, we'll apply, other grants help develop.
But all grants, all grants aren't such a great thing, Joel.
Yeah.
Just that it's a grant, doesn't mean you necessarily want it.
Well.
Sometimes the burden of complying with all the grant provisions is greater than the grant.
That's why we hired a consultant.
Yeah, right.
We hired a consultant, we approved the topographical survey.
Right.
And she's supposed to be contacting him to see if he's done with that, and then we're going to schedule a meeting. I did get prices on doing a drone flight with GPS, and we'll see if that coordinates with our person that we hired to do that.
What do you mean?
Well, we have a bunch of trees down.
Right.
Well, it's all on private property on both sides of the river.
Oh, clean out the river.
So you can walk the river, but I don't know who owns that side or that side, so I want to fly it with a drone or the GPS to get pictures and GPS of all the trees and coordinate it with the property owner on each side.
Right.
So I did get prices for that, but I'm going to let Ms. Blau kind of run the show and see if she thinks that's beneficial at this point in time.
We'll just do it within the township, whether within the township borders.
Yeah, but it's like 1.8 miles if you're a bird, and it's like, what was it, 21,000 feet if you walk the river? That's how crooked that river is. So you got four miles instead of 1.8. So, so hopefully, probably before, hopefully before May, we'll have a meeting.
Hope so, you know, we're giving her time to overlook this, and I, you know, we suggested the 30th of April, and then she came back and said, give me time to review this topographical map and come up with ideas and solutions, so I just left it in her ballpark. I said, you contact me when you're ready to have a meeting, and we'll call our people together, we'll be happy to listen.
As a teenager, I knew from Rashet all the way up to the front door highway, there's a lot of luggage you're going to pull back.
See, I don't think they've been moved yet, so.
Okay, moving on, new business. Item A, computer purchase. We have to replace one of our computers. I got a price from our IT representative from Network Computers. I looked at the last one we got, the price is not far different, it meets all the things that we need, and I would recommend that we purchase the computer.
I make a motion to purchase this computer.
Yeah, how much is?
$539.99.
Support.
Move and supported. Purchase a computer from Network Computers for an amount of $539.99. Is there any discussion?
I have one question. Is the Pentium, it has a Pentium processor, but most of them have Intel 7s, 5s now.
Either Windows or. It could be Windows 10.
It could be Windows 10.
Yeah, but the processor in the computer, it appears to me, I couldn't, I'm no expert at all, but it appears to be an older, slower processor than there, than is, but is in most of them, the new machines now, that the new machines have an Intel 5 or an Intel 7, not a Pentium.
Please, do you see what will work with the SNA? I'm sure it's not slow.
We can find out.
Yeah, I would ask, because just my own experience, I've always tried to get the high-end processor, because anything you get in the future works, and if you don't have it, it doesn't always work, so it's probably worth the investment.
That's by three-point giga hertz.
Yeah.
Giga hertz.
Well.
It's fast, I guess.
Yeah.
I would just say, I think it's worth asking him.
I will let go, but knowing, knowing Brian, it is fast.
And I appreciated the information on the security issues.
No problems. I can talk to him about it, but I'm sure it's really fast.
Just a suggestion.
Well, you can ask him about the processors.
Yeah, just ask him, see if that processor will carry you into the future well enough.
If you give us a couple days' notice, Dan, we could have had this for you.
I think that's.
Frankly, I didn't notice it until this minute, so.
Okay.
All right.
So.
Should we vote?
No, we haven't voted.
But you're going to have this question answered.
Well, we're, he can change it.
Yeah, I think we can go ahead, and I think if we ask him, he can come in, and then, you know, the money, if it's not in money at all.
It probably is.
You're probably all right, but it's worth an ask.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we need a roll call vote?
Yes. All right, Colleen.
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is work orders for the road commission. There's probably going to be a couple more small ones down the road. On the front page, I had listed them, so, and last year I looked at the minutes, and the motion carried what it was and how much it was, so that we always have a good record, you know, because it's in the minutes book. Does anybody have any questions on any of the work orders?
No, I make a motion to appropriate the money for the following work orders. Limestone for $4,998.33. Chloride for $42,636. Swath mowing for $5,000, and shoulder patching for $2,000.
Support.
Support.
Oh, I think Colleen.
I think Colleen got you.
Oh, okay, you got.
Okay, move and supported to approve the county road commission work orders in the amount specified in the motion. Is there any discussion?
Just, was that east to west roads this year, you went and did limestone?
Yeah.
Yes, Springborn, Lindsay, how do you get, well, it's here on the back.
And we put a few extra loads on the worst spots.
I have a question about that, but wait, after this is done.
So, okay.
We need a roll call vote.
We do.
All right, Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, item C.
I have a question about roads.
Oh.
We've appreciated, I know along Puttigat they put sites of stone and also on Beetham, but all the corners, it appears to me, from, at least from Puttigat down to Meisner, there's, it appears they didn't drop stone in the corner and grade the corner like they did the rest of the road. The stone stops a couple hundred yards, a hundred yards before the corner, and the corner is pretty ragged, both all of the, like across from us, our side, and our corner, it's all as down at the corner of Meisner before you get to pavement. And we're kind of puzzled about that, because really, it's like you, when you're coming off of one of these expressway ramps, you get a big bunch of potholes and washboards, and so we're not sure what the county is, I know it's not you, what's the county doing with the corners? And why are they doing it that?
Well, I know, at the corner where I live, it was pretty rough going one way, but smooth going the other, because that's the way they scraped it last. But now, the frost is out, it is out, they were out today, and I don't think that's going to be a problem.
What about the stone, aren't they adding stone at the corners?
They usually go all the way down the road.
Because, you know, you look at the corner and you come up to it, and it's like, big mud ruts on the sides of the road, even though that's not the case up and down the road, but on the corners it is.
On dirt roads both ways?
Mm-hmm, take a look.
Don't notice that?
I buzzed in Patty's ear the other day.
The corners always.
I buzzed in yours.
Corners always take more abuse from the turning.
That's true, but it's more than that, it's more, it's further from, you know, it's more than that.
By us, it was rough going one way, because it's great the other way, but they were out today, and I think it's pretty good right now.
It's much improved, without a doubt. It's much improved without a doubt.
So I'm hoping that as the weather straightens out, they've been trying to cut the berms down a little bit so they get the water off the road, which would help a measure of.
Yes.
Why the corners are bad other than that?
I'm just curious about the stone, the application of stone. I mean.
Well, they spread it.
It doesn't seem like they're grading the corners in quite the same way as they're grading, I could have thought about this, but as they are the main roadway up and down between the corners, and I'm not sure if that's deliberate or resulting in the problem, or if I'm wrong.
Well, they rarely scrape two miles at a time anymore, for liability purposes or whatever. They usually do a mile at a time now. Now, maybe they pull the scraper up to the corner to turn around.
That's probably true.
That may be part of it. I'll ask Mike.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking, just kind of look into it.
No problem. Hopefully, we don't get too much rain, and they stay halfway decent for a little bit. Had a rough winter on roads.
Yeah, Melrose. But Melrose is wonderful right now, down, down my end anyway, to the highway, it's good to the city highway.
A lot of suspensions went down the tubes in front of our house, in front of Eddie's and my, between us. It was just great.
You gotta go slow, so you can.
Oh, you do, but the big, come down, rolling down the road, and then, oh, and a sudden, they hit this incredible bunch of huge potholes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's too much.
Yeah.
That's not so right now, it's better.
Okay. Moving on. Item C, planning commission resignation. Spoke with Kyle Robertson, and due to his work schedule and a change in it, he felt he should resign from the planning commission because he wouldn't be able to attend enough meetings, so we should have a motion to accept his resignation?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept Kyle, and I'd like to add that he did a good job. I hope sometime in the future he can, you know, maybe rejoin the planning commissioners zone, or, because I do think very smart young man he'd be.
Good, good.
So.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported. To accept the resignation of Kyle Robertson from the planning commission. We would like to thank him for his service, and when he gets squared away, maybe he'll be back on some other committee or commissioner or something. Okay. Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stating motion carries. Next item. Planning commission appointment, Robert Wazalowski. Bob's lived in a township, eh, about 25 years, I would say, and the, he was on the board review for a couple of years until his work hours got shifted, and he said he'd be willing to serve. So he did a good job on the board review, I think he'd be good on the planning commission.
I made a motion to accept the appointment of Robert Wazalowski to the Castco Township Plan Commission.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported. To approve the appointment of Robert Wazalowski to the planning commission. Any discussion? Hear none, call for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, stating motion carries. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is assessor's contract. Last month, we had a little discussion, and the board voted to set the pay scale for our assessor, and she drew up a contract to reflect that, and here it is. So we need to approve her contract.
I have a question about this. I know that the original contract was a two-year duration, and we're breaking it up in the middle and increasing the rate, right?
Right.
Is that what she has been, is that been what has been happening with her contracts in other townships, or is it just us, or? I mean, how does this fit into the larger?
Well, I don't believe she had two of her contracts at the other municipalities.
See, I, I know that the pay scales for other townships might be different than ours.
Yeah, they're all different.
Yeah, but there's sometimes reasons for that, because they're, you know, require level three, or level two, or level one. We require what?
Level three is the highest.
Yeah, I know, but we require a level two, correct? You know, so I'm just wondering if, if, you know, this is in keeping with what's going on with her contracts and the payment of assessors generally.
Somebody.
Because we're breaking up a contract that was negotiated as a two-year contract, and which she agreed to, so it just kind of raises some questions about it.
That we would not like to go into at this moment. If you want to come into the office and discuss it with us, we will talk to you about it.
You mean why the contract is being changed now?
Right.
We can discuss it tonight if there's some valid reason that the board should know. They're getting ready to vote on the contract.
Didn't she have a one, one-year contract, Bill, and you proposed a two-year contract?
She had a two-year contract. And last year, a year ago, it was a two-year contract.
But before that, it was?
Before, it was year-to-year.
Right, and Bill, under Bill's recommendation and request of Shelley, she agreed, yes. It was prior to, it's been one year up until this, this year.
I have nothing to say because I'm not hearing anything, but.
She was not hap, let's put it this way, she was not happy with her contract, and that is why she came to the board.
I mean, do we have to rescind the old contract, or do we have to do a board actually to read this?
It's rescinded, isn't it?
Rescinded.
I asked the same question, and it was rescinded. I didn't know.
She was not happy with the contract, and that's why she came and asked for the money.
Okay, I mean, I don't begrudge her the funds, I think she does a really, a really good job, but, you know, when you break a contract that you already agreed to, and it's, it isn't a huge long time, you know.
Which.
And I don't know that she felt she was underpaid originally.
But, well.
She didn't a year ago.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm suggesting, because she, you know.
Well.
And I kind of look at it a little different. I really hate breaking contracts, because when I sign a contract, I'll, I won't break it. But if she were to leave, and she could leave any day she wants because she's in such high demand, what would it cost you to replace her?
Right.
Way more than what we're getting.
I spoke strongly in favor.
Right.
The pay rates, you know, but I also.
But I do not like breaking contracts.
Yeah, and I don't like it when, when employers help hostage by employing, say, "Well, if you don't give me this, I'm gonna leave." I don't really.
That is not what she meant.
As a manager, I didn't go for that either, so, you know.
But she didn't like the other way, the other way around either.
Yeah. Okay, we go forward then.
All right.
With some reservations.
Okay, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the assessor's contract, support.
Are we gonna include any dollar amounts in the motion? Yearly amount?
Okay, I will do that.
Here it is.
Oh, I see. Oh, yearly amount will be $27,972.
Right.
I would also like to end it on this, this contract is replacement of their current contract date in March 26, 2018. Contract date in March is here, the contract, March 8, 2018, to your board.
In the motion?
It says that.
It's in the contract.
It says that.
We don't have to take it.
You're approving the contract. So you, so your motion will include that?
Include her total amount.
Yes, but not that last of.
No.
No, because it's already in here.
Okay, moved and supported. To approve the contract for our township assessor, Shelley Blaumeister, for a total yearly amount of $27,972. Is there any discussion? Hear none, we have a roll call vote?
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Item F, work on the cemetery. I kind of outlined in your update what the deal is at the cemetery. There's a mystery under the ground that's, it's washing in the dirt down to a tube.
Really?
No, we don't know until you dig it up.
Where it came from?
What or who you got.
Well, there's a tube under there, we know what it's doing, but obviously, obviously, there's either a break or a leak, and it's washing in the ground from the top, and it's gonna plug the tube, and then it won't work. So I tried to get a couple prices, I got an hourly rate price of $125 an hour, and I got a price from another firm that's in our township, Ratty Foundations and Water Propping, and he looked at it, and he was reasonably certain of what the problem was, and he said he would repair, repair it for $800. So I think the two, if you figure it out, are probably gonna be a wash. So that being said, I would recommend Ratty Foundation Water Propping Solutions.
I like it better because it's not to exceed numbers, so to speak. I'll move, did you move that?
No.
No.
I'll move that we accept the Ratty, Ted Ratty Foundation and Water Propping Solutions bid to repair the culvert at the joint with concrete and whatever else is required is, is in the proposal for it underdone.
I'll support that.
Mr. Edgington is here about the cemetery, but it's not really about the tube.
Well, but.
I can ask you to speak now, do you think it's pertinent, or you can wait? Two more jumps to the.
Whatever cuisine it for you.
Well, let's move ahead.
Let's finish this, and then he can talk.
Okay, we have moved and supported to approve the bid of Ratty Water Propping. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote?
Okay, Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. We received this from AT&amp;T, it's a five-year extension of right-of-way under the Metro Act. It's pretty cut and dried. Under the Metro Act, we do get a little bit of money every year, like three or 4,000 bucks. I ran it past the attorney who said, you know, it's as good as it's gonna get. So we need to approve this.
I make a motion to accept AT&amp;T Metro Act right-of-way permit extension.
I'll approve that, I'll support that.
Moved and supported. To approve the Metro Act right-of-way permit extension for AT&amp;T. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. Payment of the bills.
Question, do we know about that refund of fire run? I don't know if we're gonna. This is the first thing.
Refund of what?
Oh, Mr. Sack. Al Sacco refund for fire run.
Oh, he had paid for a fire run, and then his insurance company came through and paid for it, so we returned this money.
Gotcha. Okay, we got the check from the insurance company.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills, or submit it.
Support.
Moved and supported to pay the bills. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, citizens' comments. And we have a couple citizens tonight, but I'm sure they're loaded with wisdom. I know Mr. Edgington wants to ask some questions concerning the cemetery.
Yeah, I'm glad to talk about the Adair Cemetery. There's a conversation about cemetery when we're sitting here, and Bill was nice to come up and kind of fill me in a little bit. I was concerned over the years about the possible grave sites that are being overgrown by trees, and part of the gully that kind of goes through the cemetery, it's my understanding that there's graves in there, and they're being lost or forgotten, and so I was concerned a little bit about, you know, it'd be nice if somebody went there, and if you didn't clean them all out, if you cleaned some of them out, it kind of opened it up a little bit nicer. Bill was kind of, had an idea, which I kind of agree to, it's kind of quaint. There was a Facebook website I was looking at a couple days ago, talked about small towns, you know, villages in the state, and about Adair, and about the cemetery, and showed a picture that it was spooky. You know, and it's probably because it's, you know, covered with the trees in the front. But again, what Bill and I was talking, Bill's idea was, well, maybe that's good, you know.
The kids away.
Yeah, so, but if you open it up, too, I don't know. So, you know, it's just a little concern I had about our forefathers that have been here, maybe, and, you know, if there are sites that are, you know, we're forgetting about these people. And just today, I mean, I didn't do no research on all this, but I was just on the computer, and it pulled up a couple other sites where you can do, like, find a grave, and they only, and they only list two cemeteries, and it's not, and that's not one of the two cemeteries in the township that you can locate a grave site.
Didn't you have?
I'm sorry. Okay. So I don't know, you know, what it is, but if there's something, maybe should, that would be nice if that had some more. I'll see what, you know. But it's just a concern, and, you know, it's something I've thought about for a long time, and just never thought a thing about it, and then I seen this on the agenda today, and I said, well, it just doesn't come hurt to talk about.
You know, maybe since we have that nice Castco Township website that isn't, it isn't the township board, but it's a community, you know, I wouldn't be the least bit surprised if we couldn't get some people out for a cleanup day.
Well, that's what, I talked to Wayne Baumgard once about it here, just a few months ago, and I said, "Isn't it be nice if you wanted some volunteers and put something out there? As a community, go in there and pitch it," and I said, "I'd be glad to."
Do that.
Yeah, the county did clean that ditch out in that front a few years ago. It used to be a lot more overgrown, but they cleaned it out there for a while. You're right, it needs to be general.
Well, we have, on the first Saturday of every month, at noon, at the Adair Bar, we have people who just come, and it's kind of a meet and greet.
Yeah, I've seen that.
And we could, you know, we could put something on that website to just say, you know, maybe we could meet at the bar, have lunches, we always do, and then, you know, have a little work group that went over there. I just worry a little bit because those graves are so old, and made of wood, a lot of them, you know, that we stay very surface, and it might be weed picking and whatever else, but certainly, nothing more energetic than that. And if there are stones that, that can be cleaned, I just read an article about the young man who did that for Vietnam Vet Graves, and gave us the solution of water and whatever he used, you know, to, to do the stone graves of forgotten vets, that was a nice article.
They got some solution that you could just spray on it, and you just let the rain and the weather wash it off, and it cleans it.
But I, you know what, I think, I think we have a community that would.
I think you need a contractor there, something that could take debris away, you know, if it was only once a year on a certain date or something, but if they had somebody behind it.
Yeah, like, we did up St. Michael's, Southern Richmond, what we just had this past Saturday. We had a bunch of fresheners, and we start at nine o'clock, and it usually takes us two to three hours, and we cleaned it up, and we have a dumpster there and everything.
I don't know why we couldn't do that. We'll put it out there on that website, and maybe we could, what is this paper? Maybe they're gonna be, well, gathering the first Saturday in, in May at Adair Bar.
That's suckerfest weekend.
Oh, suckerfest weekend.
Oh, you have a lot of volunteers then.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You may not want all them over there.
Except for the ravine portion, which is what you're concerned about.
Yeah.
Our maintenance person has the rest very clean. I mentioned today that maybe we could have Dennis go down, look closer, see if there's any headstones down here. I'm worried about, he was talking about removing trees. Now you're gonna get erosion, there's very steep walls on that ravine. But we'd have to see if we can find something to begin with, because if everything was wood and it's all gone, you're never gonna find anything. When we had the old gentleman do our survey.
Right.
He did give. a new map, and I have it in here. And this whole section, it says "old section." They didn't mark one grave in the whole section, and it's not been marked to date. Well, most of the limestone's gone, the wood's all gone, but there are some marble and other headstones that are still in there. But we can probably get that on the website.
I agree.
Because we've had people come in once in a while and I show it to them, and they look.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be on the township website.
Township website, yeah.
Yeah. And if you take a ride over there, except for the ravine, the rest is very well-maintained. There are people that came in and said how much they liked the way he was taking care of the cemetery the last couple of years. He's very picky and he does a very good job. But I can ask him if he wants to go down the ravine and see if he can spot anything. I would have to talk to somebody that knows more than I do to tell you whether, I'd be very hesitant to cut the trees out of there.
Right.
Because even if you left the stump, one of the stump rods, are you gonna get erosion? I'd have to talk to the engineer for the road commission and see what angle a bank would erode if you took the trees out. I know in the county ditches, you can cut the tree, but you can't touch the stump. And they say that'll grow around it in 20 years or whatever. So-
Well, I have brand-new trees coming out of the stumps that, you know, the dead, the ash trees that are on my property line, and brand-new trees coming right up out of the old stump. You never know.
About 25 years ago, the whole cemetery was a jungle, just a jungle. And Karen Hulk got a group of volunteers and they paid some contractors, and they cleaned it up, for the most part, very good.
Very well.
And we've taken much better care of it since then. So-
But it is spooky. You can't deny that, but that's part of the charm.
He mentioned, you know, that it's spooky and the trees. I said, you know, that's not a bad thing. It's not by accident.
Yeah.
If you have business there, that's, well, good.
But it's still-
When the Detroit Edison cut all pine trees along Palms Road, they exposed all those headstones. And the trees needed to go. They were up in the wires, they were all over. I really hate to see them lose the cover for the headstones, because now when you drive by, you see the headstones. Because if somebody wants to cause some trouble, they'll know where to go.
Yeah.
So we've been fortunate. We haven't had any trouble. But, well, we can look into it if the group then gets together, if they want to form some kind of cleanup, but I can't tell you about the ravine until you get more information.
Yeah, I think that's a good follow-up, and what you said, Colleen, I think would work too.
Yeah, you know.
It's a start, something to look into, yeah. I'd be satisfied.
We can send it out there and, you know, send it out to the world and see. As the days get nicer and the weather gets nicer, it'd be a nice community thing to do. We're gonna be doing the same thing on the park property, you know, community cleanups and community plantings, whatever else, you know. It is for the, it is for everybody here, so it's nice. And that is a very historic piece of property. And I think people would maybe like to wander in there and visit and maybe, maybe spruce it up a little bit more than it is with-
I find it amazing that there's 500 people there.
500 people, that surprises me as well.
What's the oldest, how long has it been there?
1800 is the earliest.
So we might have some Civil War people in there.
Yeah, I think there is a couple.
Oh, my gosh, you know.
Revolutionary war, veterans of the-
Revolutionary-
Not that I'm aware of.
1800?
All he could do is go on the computer and search back for the names and see if they were in the military or whatever.
It'd be nice to put flags out there and Flag Day and Veterans Day, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Well, if the VFW, if they knew if there was a veteran grave there marked it, put the flag there.
They do do that now.
Yeah. Yeah, they do that at St. Michael's. They put the flags out for Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Yeah. But thank you for your concern.
Okay, for coming.
Yeah. Mr. Steele, you got anything?
No.
No?
Okay. Anybody else have anything? No, Sucker Fest is coming, the first weekend in May.
Oh.
No Parks Committee meeting.
Yeah, no, we're not, I suggested the 30th of April, but I've kind of rescinded that until I hear from Ms. Blau that she's gotten the topographical and has gone over it and has some recommendations. So-
We have that new dumb Google email at work. I hate it.
Oh, well, and my emails sometimes have not been going through, because I'd email to make, you know, some things for the school district and they never got them. And I don't know that they haven't. So I'm glad I'm getting a new computer and thank you very much.
Any prospects for the Neighborhood Watch, Reawakening?
I haven't heard of them.
No, I know a couple of months ago Wayne was trying to get a meeting going.
Yeah. My neighbor just got, right across the road, they got outside.
But you know, the, one of the best things is this old Castco Township neighborly thing. Oh, you don't get away with much without something-
They see something suspicious there.
Is the number of break-ins decreased though?
I haven't heard of anybody.
Heard of any lately.
I mean, not that there hasn't been, but-
I gave you that summary the whole year, back in January. Yeah, I mean, since then.
Nah, there was, well, there was a couple, but nothing big.
No. All's quiet in Castco Township this.
In a minute, we're gonna adjourn, then we have a two-minute election meeting. If you want to be asked about something, stick around. It'll be a couple minutes.
There will be an election on May the 7th?
Yeah.
For the East China School District for their bond issue for a new school that will consolidate East of Marine City and St. Clair into one high school.
Also for-
And the middle, well, not the middle school, that will be-
Don't forget the upgrading of all elementary schools.
Well, yes. Read the, read, we have the bond language here, if you like, and I'm sure they've sent something to every homeowner in East China.
Marine City and St. Clair High School, what?
Yes.
And the middle school.
The numbers, the numbers do not any longer support the idea of a high school in St. Clair and a high school in Marine City. So whether or not this bond passes, there will be a combination of both schools in the area. And, yes.
Doesn't Anchor Bay want to be part of the Castco?
Anchor Bay does, but-
But they've already got their-
Yeah, they've got their-
No, I thought right there at the corner of Meisner and Church.
They still own, what, is it 76 acres or?
Okay.
About 76 acres, which for a school really is not much.
So what, the name, is it gonna be the St. Mary's?
It probably will be, yes.
Like Mary's?
I do, will probably be the East China School District, and then we'll decide on what colors we wear on the football field.
The St. Lee Mary's.
The St. Lee Mary's, yeah.
Should call it the D E E.
That doesn't even ring with me.
The other ones that are paying a lot of the bills.
Yes.
Yeah, but hopefully I'll get to it.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we're up to adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll support that.
Moving on, supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.